At this time, I'd like to call the Special Education Budget Hearing Meeting to order on Tuesday, August 9th, 2016. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Here.
Ms. Jisling?
Present.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
At this time, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, please.
Yes, thank you. Both federal regulations and Ohio regulations require that annually we conduct a public hearing for the proposed budget for federal grants or entitlement grants for the school district, Title 1A funds, Title 2A funds, Title III funds, and then IDEA as well as special education preschool. These individual federal grants are dependent on the number of qualified students for each one, either through economic disability, limited English proficient, or students with special needs. We have before you proposed budgets for each of those programs for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. Once the hearings conducted, the Board does not have to take any specific action, but it's an opportunity for Board members and the public to offer any opinions on the proposed budgets before they're officially filed with the Ohio Department of Education as the managers on behalf of the federal government. Basically, the budgets support the ongoing programs that have been in place for a number of years within the school district. There are new grants awarded this year. The budget allocations, again, are based on number of students eligible for each of the grants, and the per pupil funding, and there's been very little change in the per pupil funding and very little change in the number of students. So it would open for any questions you may have on any of the individual budget allocations, and following that, we can complete the hearing and be ready for 7:00.
Does anyone have any questions?
I don't.
Question?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Okay.
Okay, please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our next meeting will begin 7:00?
7:00 PM.
Okay. The August 9th, 2016 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Here.
Ms. Jisling?
Present.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to welcome everyone to the August 9th, 2016 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each Board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the Board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing this Sunday prior to the Board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the Superintendent and the Chief Financial Officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the Board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the Board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the Board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the Board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the President. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on the Time Warner Cable Channel 96.96 in Mentor and Channel 96.22 in Mentor on the Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent. Approval of the minutes? So moved.
Second.
Right, Mr. Wilson?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And at this time, we'll have a hearing of the public on agenda items only. Okay, thank you. Mr. Miller?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 5A1 through 5A5. So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the Board, we are pleased to recognize several staff members this evening who are being honored for their commitment to their schools and to our students. Mrs. Jisling will join me in the presentations. We're going to begin this evening with our Outstanding Service Award winners. Every year, nominations are taken for classified staff to receive this award. Nominees must demonstrate enthusiasm for his or her responsibilities, a commitment to mentor schools, and have the respect of their colleagues, parents, and students. The five winners selected this year fit that criteria perfectly. It is our pleasure to honor the winners of the 2016 Outstanding Service Award. And we are going to start tonight with Mrs. Fern, Jessie Sue Fern, if you could please come on up, please. Well-respected by both the Sterling Morton and We Care communities, I don't know you as Jessie Sue, it's Mrs. Fern. It's hard for me to say, hard for me, if they said Jessie Sue won, I'm like, who is that? Mrs. Fern is a positive influence in her position as We Care Lead, as well as a school volunteer. Ms. Fern is always looking for new activities and programs that will interest and engage her students and encourage her staff to do the same. This past school year, Ms. Fern set up a reading program during We Care where students spend time reading to a therapy dog, created a Twitter account to keep parents informed, and planned countless crafts and activities based on her students' interests. She encourages the students to be kind and compassionate towards one another and has been an integral part in fostering positive relationships between the students. Congratulations. In Karen Murky's role as the Lake Elementary School Office Assistant, Karen Murky is always willing to help anyone and does so happily. She was, she always greets people with respect and a smile. Within weeks of school starting, Ms. Murky has learned every student's name. She helps out with several after-school activity programs and is willing to help with any project that staff, students, or parents dream up. She is able to answer their questions or direct you to the right person. Ms. Murky is well-respected by everyone at Lake Elementary. Congratulations. Next up is Lisa Misko. As a classroom assistant at Fairfax Elementary, Lisa demonstrates enthusiasm on a daily basis, going above and beyond for the children in her classroom. On her own time, she has attended conferences to learn more about behavior in students with autism. She is willing to research and learn new strategies to better the classroom and help the students. She supports her students by attending events like Special Olympics. All of her colleagues love Ms. Misko's enthusiasm and energy that she brings on a daily basis. Congratulations, Lisa. Is Mr. Swider here tonight? I don't think I see him. Is he here? No. I'm going to mention a couple words about Mr. Swider. As Mentor High School's head custodian, Mike Swider is always looking for ways to improve operations and the daily routines of the building. He's a problem solver. Regardless of the issue the staff comes up with, Mr. Swider's answer is always, let's figure out a way. He's more than willing to go above and beyond to help staff, students, and community. He also brings attention to potential issues ahead of time in order to avoid conflicts. Mr. Swider is actively involved in parent groups and community organizations. He contributes to the school as a whole with his family and supports district and school programs. He is extremely helpful, professional, and friendly, and is an asset to Mentor High. So with that, we'd like to give a round of applause to Mr. Swider. Just a quick anecdotal note, I can always tell if the high school's ready to start by whether or not Mike is hyper, and today in the hallway, he looked very calm, so that made me calm. Next up is Carolyn Tompkins. Carolyn? Carolyn demonstrates patience and dedication on a daily basis as a classroom assistant at Shore Middle School. Mrs. Tompkins wants to ensure that each and every student she works with excels in their classwork. She is always willing to help, not only with the students she has assigned to, but with any student in the class. She has an ability to build self-esteem of the kids through her caring nature. Outside of the classroom, Mrs. Tompkins is always willing to pitch in and help, whether it's as a chaperone on a field trip, cafeteria duty, or caroling with friends of Rachel. Congratulations, Carolyn. All right, next, Madam President and members of the Board, nominations are also taken every year for the Excellence in Teaching Award. This award recognizes certified staff members who demonstrate exemplary qualities in their profession and are involved in activities which reflect a personal commitment. Tonight's six recipients represent the best at mentor schools. It's our pleasure to honor the winners of the 2016 Excellence in Teaching Awards, and we're going to start with one of our instructional coaches, Mrs. Adamson. Darlene? As an instructional coach at Shore Middle School, Darlene's work has epitomized both exceptional performance and professionalism. She has worked with every staff member and student in a positive manner. With Mrs. Adamson's support, the teachers at Shore have continued to grow and learn using data and technology to drive their instruction with research-based and authentic measures for student performance. Her positive outlook, attitude, and growth mindset has set the teachers and administrators up for success as they continue to learn and grow. Congratulations, Darlene. Next is Mr. Brian Butler. Through his passion for the subject of science, Mr. Butler invigorates the students in his classes at Mentor High School to probe more deeply into the reasons behind different scientific facts. He methodically plans out every activity for his students so they can gain the deepest understanding of the topic, whether that be AP students or freshmen, physical science or biology. Mr. Butler has a way of drawing student interest and creating an atmosphere where each student can feel comfortable taking risks when answering questions. In his 22 years of teaching at Mentor, Mr. Butler has shown that he is an excellent teacher who is always willing to try new approaches and support district and building initiatives. Congratulations, Brian. Next up is Patty Cahill. As a nurse at both Brentmore and Fairfax Elementary Schools, Patty has gone above and beyond what was expected of her in order to help the students in any way she could. She is thorough in making sure that all staff members are informed of student health issues and in training staff for emergencies, as well as caring for students with special health issues. She has been instrumental in designing training for staff and has always been available for teachers and other staff members to discuss health issues of their students. Mrs. Cahill makes a point of knowing the students and families at each school where she works. She is compassionate, thoughtful, organized, and always professional. Congratulations, Patty. As an intervention specialist at Fairfax, Stephanie McPeak is a mentor for her colleagues, building a strong rapport with students, staff, and parents. She is constantly trying out new ideas and strategies in her classroom to keep her students engaged, implementing new curriculum strategies to maintain their attention and interest. Additionally, as a behavioral specialist, Mrs. McPeak aids her colleagues by introducing strategies at staff meetings or sharing information with them. She is able to provide a different perspective and alternate strategies to allow her colleagues opportunities to try new approaches that will benefit the students. Congratulations, Stephanie. Melinda O'Connor has a zeal and enthusiasm for teaching computer information systems in the Career Tech Department at Mentor High School. She has demonstrated a passion for teaching and learning and has been an innovator in her seven years of service to Mentor Public Schools. Mrs. O'Connor ensures that her program stays current, not only with the state standards, but with the needs of local businesses and industry. She has recently altered the curriculum of the class to focus on programming, analyst's design, database administration, and computer and mobile applications. She incorporates concepts to provide the opportunity for her students to earn additional college credits through her program beyond what they already receive through Lakeland. Congratulations, Melinda. And last, but certainly not least, Katie Romo. Katie is the personification of a deeply caring and generous teacher. She cares not only about the students on her responsibility list, but about each and every student in the entire school. As a speech and language teacher at Brentmore, Mrs. Romo is always reaching out to her colleagues to collaborate and find ways in which the team can be more effective with all of the students. She exudes a calm, yet energetic focus when working with students and encourages everyone around her. She readily accepts all the challenges that arrive and is not satisfied until she finds the way to make students successful in speech and language concepts. Congratulations, Cody, Katie. At this time, Mr. Porter, along with Ms. Jisling, will recognize Ridge Middle School teacher Kim Atkins, recipient of the 2016 Ohio Council of Teachers of Mathematics Outstanding Teachers Award. Mr. Porter?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. Tonight, we have the privilege of honoring Ms. Kim Atkins, a math teacher at Ridge Middle School, who has been named as one of the 2016 Ohio Council of Mathematics Outstanding Teachers. Ms. Atkins has been in mentor schools for 10, the past 10 years. Most recently, in her role at Ridge, she has been instrumental in modeling an instructional shift so that her students spend a high percentage of their time participating in hands-on learning. This takes students beyond the tasks of just memorizing formulas and procedures. Instead, they develop a deeper, deeper understanding of math, which is especially important with the increased emphasis on problem solving. In math class, Ms. Atkins' students are often organized in small groups, engaging in any number of activities, including individualized mini lessons and use of iPad applications. It is this format that allows each student to reach his or her full potential. Among other accomplishments, Ms. Atkins has presented previously at the Greater Cleveland Council of Teachers of Math and has served as a session coordinator at EdCamp Northeast Ohio 2016. She will be attending the State Math Conference this year in October. Ms. Atkins, please join us up front with your principal, Ms., from Ridge, Ms. Blackburn. Congratulations.
Madam President and members of the Board, we have 10 first readings of new and revised policies this evening. They are attached as New Policies 9.41 through 9.43, Revised Policies 3.04, 6.11, 6.15, 639, 9.06, 9.11, and 9.12. Because our first readings, no vote is necessary this evening. Moving on, I am recommending approval of Revised Policy 3.09, Alcohol and Drug Testing Policy for Employees, including employees performing safety-sensitive duties. So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm also recommending approval of Revised Policy 9.16, School Nutrition and Wellness. So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm also recommending approval of Revised Policy 9.16, School Nutrition and Wellness. So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the Board, I'm recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to Certified Personnel and Agenda Item C2 through C4, all related to Human Resource Matters. So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the Board, I'm recommending approval of Exchange Teacher Mr. Mahmoud Hagazi, under contract with and fully funded by the Teachers of Critical Language Program Grant, who will serve as an Arabic teacher at Mentor High School for the 2016-2017 school year. So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the Board, at this time, it's our privilege to introduce our newest staff members to mentor schools. Every year, we choose the best of the best, and this is no exception. We feel confident that there'll be outstanding teachers and staff members, and we're excited to have them join our Cardinal family. Mrs. Burnett will start making presentations momentarily.
Madam President, members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, this evening, I am ecstatic to introduce you to Mentor Public Schools' teaching staff for the 16-17 school year. Our administrators have spent countless hours reviewing resumes, applications, and interviewing candidates. We truly believe we found the best candidate for each position, and we are proud to welcome each one into our Cardinal family. I would first like to introduce Alyssa Abernathy. Alyssa earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education from Northland International University and then pursued her master's degree in special education from Liberty University. Alyssa completed her student teaching at Shore Middle School and Brentmore Elementary. Alyssa grew up with a brother with Down Syndrome, and she shared that she, that he has been her biggest inspiration to pursue a degree and career in special education. She will be joining the staff at Sterling Morton Elementary as an intervention specialist. I told them they all had to stand. Don Adams. Don earned her bachelor's degree in the area of special education from Cleveland State University. Don completed her student teaching at Broadmoor School. After student teaching, Don worked at the Rosemary Center and then Cleveland Metropolitan Schools for eight years. This past school year, Don was at the Monarch School in Shaker Heights. Don enjoys reading, yoga, and being outdoors. Don will be joining the staff at CARES as an intervention specialist. Congratulations. Valerie earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of Dayton. While at the University of Dayton, she was also able to obtain her P3 Intervention Specialist license and the 4.5 General Endorsement. Val completed her student teaching at Holy Angel School and Walter Shade Early Childhood Center. While Valerie was in college, she tutored inmates at the Montgomery County Jail in Dayton, Ohio. She'll be joining the staff at Belfour Elementary as a fifth-grade teacher. Welcome. Adam earned his bachelor's degree from State University of New York and Albany, New York, and then pursued a master's degree from Hunter's College in the area of special education. Adam worked for New York City Public Schools and recently was at Brady Middle School in the Orange School District. He met his fiancee in a capella singing group while living in New York City. Adam will be joining the staff at Ridge Middle School as an intervention specialist. Welcome. Next, Katie Braun. Katie earned her bachelor's degree from Kent State University in the area of special education. Last school year, Katie completed two long-term assignments for mentor schools. She was first placed at Mentor High School and soon moved over to Memorial Middle School for the majority of the school year. Katie completed her student teaching at Kent Roosevelt High School in Kent. Katie has played the guitar for over 11 years and performs at different events, but enjoys performing for the students in her classroom. Katie will be joining the Memorial Middle School staff as an intervention specialist this school year. Welcome. Mr. Hagazi is an exchange teacher from Egypt. He will be teaching Arabic 1 and 2 to middle school and high school students this coming school year. He has worked as a secondary English teacher for the past 15 years and currently worked at a STEM school with gifted students. And he also works as an ESL lecturer and Arabic tutor at the British Institute. He is very excited to be part of the mentor community. Welcome. Sarah earned her bachelor's degree in the area of Health and Physical Education and a master's degree in the area of Sports Management from Indiana University of Pennsylvania. Sarah completed her student teaching at Marion Center Elementary and High School in 2004. For the past several years, she has been a Health and Physical Education teacher with Crestwood Local Schools. Sarah was a professional basketball player in Holland and was inducted in the Indiana University of Pennsylvania Hall of Fame. Sarah will be joining the staff at Shore Middle School as the Health and Physical Education teacher. Welcome. Ben, next, I'd like to introduce Ben Miller. Ben earned his bachelor's degree in 2015 from Lake Erie College in the area of special education. Ben completed his student teaching at Perry High School and last year taught one year at Eastlake Middle School in Willoughby Eastlake School District as an intervention specialist. While at Lake Erie College, Ben was on the football team. Ben will be joining the staff at Fairfax Elementary as an intervention specialist in the structured language units. We have a very happy staff member right here. She's very excited. Next, I'd like to introduce John Palumbo. John earned his bachelor's degree in English from the University of Toledo in 2007 and then pursued a master's degree from Notre Dame College to obtain his intervention specialist license. John completed his student teaching at Moreland Hills Elementary in the Orange School District. John began his career with Palmer City Schools and as an intervention specialist. John began his career with Palmer City Schools as an intervention specialist and was recently with the Gunn School, which was part of the Orange School District. John enjoys cooking in his spare time and has joined the coaching staff at Mentor High School with the football team. John will be joining the staff at Garfield Elementary as an intervention specialist. Congratulations. Welcome. Next is Cory Prokop. Cory earned her bachelor's degree in the area of elementary education from Bowling Green State University in 2014. Cory completed her student teaching at Northwood Elementary School in a kindergarten classroom. Last year, Cory completed a year-long assignment as a third-grade teacher at Sterling Morton Elementary. Cory is a proud graduate of Mentor High School. She will be joining the staff at Hopkins Elementary as a second-grade teacher this school year. Congratulations. Jennifer earned her bachelor's degree from Notre Dame College in the area of special education. Jennifer completed her student teaching at Adrian Elementary in South Euclid in 2007. Recently, Jennifer has been an intervention specialist at St. Francis of Assisi in Gates Mills. She enjoys spending time with her two children, and her family loves to go camping. Jennifer will be joining the staff at Lake Elementary as an intervention specialist. Congratulations. Katie earned her bachelor's degree from Wittenburg in the area of special education and regular education in 2011. She completed her student teaching with Northwestern Schools in Springfield, Ohio. Previously, Katie was with Mayfield City Schools and joined Mentor Public Schools late last October as a long-term intervention specialist at Garfield Elementary. Katie enjoys spending time with her dog and is planning a wedding for this October. Katie joins the staff at Garfield Elementary as an intervention specialist. Welcome. Allison earned her bachelor's degree from Kent State University in 2008 in the area of special education. She completed her student teaching at Fairfax Elementary. After graduation from Kent, Allison taught for three years with Garfield Heights City Schools and relocated and taught in Illinois. She's excited about relocating from the Windy City to her hometown to live and teach. Allison will be joining the staff at CARES as an intervention specialist. Welcome. Joe earned his bachelor's degree from Bowling Green State University in the area of special education. He completed his student teaching at Mommy High School this past school year. Joe is the youngest of five boys in his family, and he has also auditioned for American Idol and The Voice. Joe is very excited to join the staff at Memorial Middle School as an intervention specialist. Congratulations. Carly earned her bachelor's degree from Cleveland State University in 2011 in the area of special education. She then pursued her master's degree in administration from Capella in 2014. For the past several years, Carly has been with Willoughby Eastlake Schools as an intervention specialist in an autism unit. Carly has also worked the past several summers at the CARES Extended School Year Camp with Mentor Public Schools. Carly is excited to join the staff at CARES this school year as an intervention specialist. Congratulations.
One more round of applause for all of our new staff. We're very excited for them to get started. Today was day one of four days of PD for the new staff, and they started very early this morning. So we're glad that you stuck it out, and we're glad that you're here, and we're very excited. So thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. That concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
At this time, we have business. We would like to pick an alternate and a delegate to the annual business meeting of the Ohio School Boards Association on November 14th. Are there any volunteers or... Mary Volunteer, you would like to be the delegate?
That's fine.
Okay. I can be your alternative. Okay. Okay. Mary and Ginny, then? Is that what you need?
Yep.
It's recommended that a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement with the city of Mentor and a purchase and sale agreement with the Lake County Ohio Port and Academic... I'm sorry, Economic Development Authority for the purchase of the property from the city and the sale of the property to the Port Authority, all related to the proposed Lake Hospital Systems Health and Wellness Facility be approved.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Is there a legislative report?
With such a large audience, I have nothing. But what I've asked... Typically, I have a lot to say. But what I want to do is introduce Mr. Wilson to provide us an update on a resolution that we passed in April and sent that to a number of our state legislators regarding the rollback, bring back our Homestead Exemption Act to where it once was before. It's been adjusted downward, and it's been means-tested now. So to those of us here, some of us can qualify for that benefit for a tax refund or reduction on your real estate taxes, and some of us will see less moving forward as an opportunity because they've decided to... Means-testing mainly puts a value on how much your income hat you have. If you have too much income, they reduce your tax reduction. So Mr. Wilson is continuing the quest, and so he has an update on the status. Thank you, Dan.
Great. Thank you, Tom. After the Board took action, based on the feedback we got from the community throughout our levy campaign, we distributed the resolution and a letter of encouragement to pursue legislative action to our state senator and state representatives for the school district, the leadership of the House Education Committee, the Senate Education Committee, the Speaker of the House, the President of the Senate, and to the governor. In addition, we distributed the resolution with requests for support to our various educational organizations, including the Ohio School Boards Association, the Buckeye Association of School Administrators, the Ohio Association of School Business Officials, the Alliance for High Quality Education, all of which have received it favorably. Matt was able to organize a meeting with Senator Ackland, and we had a very productive discussion that led to some possible additional support organizations in our initiative. Just yesterday, I received confirmation that the Ohio Association of School Business Officials will publish in their October newsletter an article that I'm authoring based on the Board's initiative, explaining the need for this and advocating for passage. I've also... I know both Matt and I have had conversations with the Ohio School Boards Association, hopeful that this becomes a topic for discussion when we attend the national... or the annual meeting in November. So we are actively at work. As you noted, you don't have a legislative report. The legislature's in summer recess and won't convene until late in the fall after the November election, so there aren't opportunities now to see action. However, we are engaged in conversations with senior staff people for all the various legislators that I indicated, as well as advocating through our professional organizations. So this is an important initiative to us, and as you indicated, a number of years ago, anyone age 65 or older qualified for a homestead exemption on a portion of their property tax, recognizing the economic situation of senior citizens that have a desire to stay in their home but don't have a working income always available to them. And then, secondly, the double impact of a few years ago, the Ohio Legislature discontinuing the 12.5% residential rollback credit to homeowners when new operating levies or new bond issues or new permanent improvement levies are passed. And we believe it's especially important that our seniors that have a desire to stay in their homes throughout their life have a very high quality of life connection to the quality of our education that we're providing to young people, very much want to continue to support the schools and the youth of the community, but sometimes have an economic challenge that they just can't overcome. So we believe this is an important initiative and one that, again, both Matt and I have been actively engaged with every opportunity we can find for discussions on that. So we'll be happy to provide additional updates as time goes by.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. At this time, do you have your report and recommendations?
Yes. Yes, thank you. First up is approval of the July 2016 financial statements that can be placed on file for audit. As you know, the fiscal year begins July 1st. We're operating under a temporary budget, so the financial briefs and the budget and analysis is, at this time, not real informative as to the actual budget performance, but so far, nothing out of the ordinary has happened. So I would ask for approval.
So moved. Second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education ratify the investment transactions for the month of July 2016 as presented in Exhibit 7-B.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the inter-fund transfers and advances listed in Exhibit 7-C.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve appropriation modifications to the temporary budgets as presented in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve supplemental appropriations presented in Exhibit 7-E.
So moved. Second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Next, annually, we ask the Board of Education to take action to adopt permanent appropriations or the final school year budget for our student activity funds. Student activity funds are those that are not supported by tax dollars but by revenue generated by student groups or student activities. It runs the range of student council activities to the ski club, to the football team, and everything in between. We annually solicit the advisors, and when it involves student management of funds such as student council, student council officer input and budget activities for the coming year, including expected revenue opportunities through fundraising or events held, and then the spending of those monies. Each budget is balanced and in accordance with auditor regulations, so we ask approval as presented in Exhibit 7-F.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Hold on. May I say something?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a question. Mr. Wilson or Mr. Miller, what's the rate of participation? I know at one time it was very high amongst our students population. Do you have an idea what that is?
Oh, boy. No, I would be guessing. I know that the range of student activities, non-athletic, non-musical activities in every building is pretty extensive. Of course, student council is a school-wide activity. While not all the students in a building participate, they do elect representatives from the building to do that, and has... It does benefit the entire student population, but as far as individuals actively engaged in managing the individual programs, that's something we'll have to...
Managing, I mean, student participation. I thought at one, we were over 50 percent.
I'm sure that is, and we have so many options for kids right now.
Yeah. But it is quite high. This was just a few years ago, was the last time I heard the stat. Well over 50 percent students participate.
Many students involved in more than one.
Extracurricular activity.
So...
If you have that number for the next meeting, it'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. You ready? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education authorize the payment of an invoice, or actually, three invoices presented in Exhibit 7-G.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
The next two resolutions, I'd take a moment just to speak to both, although we are asking
for separate action. Every two years, we review all of the accounts receivable for the school district, and in accordance with auditor or state regulations, we try to do a cost-benefit analysis on the collection of monies that are due to the school district. In the sense of fairness, the Board of Education instituted a program over 10 years ago that says we need to make a good faith effort to collect all monies due to the school district and being respectful of all those that do pay their various fees and obligations to the district. Our normal process is the initial issuing of an invoice or the posting of student fees annually. Then, after a reasonable period of time, a letter indicating our records show payments not been received, please make payment. If that's not successful, there's a second follow-up letter 30 days later saying, "We still have not heard from you. Please pay up." If that's not successful, we give what we refer to as a fair warning letter that says, "Within 30 days, please pay up," or indicate that we have an error on our end, or we will pursue collections with the support of a collection agency. And then, we do turn them over to a collection agency. We do put some restrictions on them. They can't call in the middle of the night or Sunday mornings. Those things can't go out of the industry norm for collection efforts, but we do, again, in the sense of fairness, do all we can to collect funds. We do reach a point, though, where either someone has moved out of the district and we don't have current contact information, the amount that owed is less than the cost of continuing to pursue collections, or in a few cases, there's a dispute on whether or not they really do owe the money, not that we made an error in issuing the invoice, but a dispute in whether or not they should be responsible for payment. The list before you, the first one is based on invoices we've issued for various services or amounts obligated by individuals to reimburse the school district, and that's in Exhibit 7-H. The second list, in Exhibit 7-I, are student fees that have been issued, some dating back to 2013, where, again, we've gone through our standard process and have not been able to get collection. So to comply with auditor expectations, we're asking that the Board authorize me to remove them from our formal receivables list. Doing that, however, doesn't eliminate our desire to collect the fees. If new information comes to us, contact information, or a new opportunity to pursue collection, we will certainly still do that even after this action tonight. Having said all that, I request the Board of Education, give us approval to make the account receivable reductions presented in Exhibit 7-H.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And then, on the second list, recommendation to approve reductions to receivables for student fees listed in Exhibit 7-H.
student fees listed in Exhibit seven dash I.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Next is a request to approve depositories for public funds. Ohio Revised Code, Chapter one thirty-five, requires us every five years or more often, if circumstances dictate, to designate financial institutions that are eligible to receive the community's tax dollars and state subsidies on behalf of the school district. Our five-year cycle has run its course, and, and the current agreements expire August twenty-first of this year. We solicited interest from the financial institutions that have a presence in the public fund sector and do business with local governments or county or state governments and have the staff and the willingness to do that. We also examined their financial strength, ensure that they're complying with collateralizing accounts above the two hundred and fifty thousand FDIC insurance limit, and then pursue entering into new contractual agreements that would allow us to place monies there. Tonight's action is authorizing me to have access to the financial institution for both checking accounts and investment purposes to those banks that have solicited, requested interest that we vetted through our process, and they demonstrated the ability to provide the services we need as a local government. And then, we will place individual working accounts based on fee structures and access to local branches as we go forward. So, tonight's action is requesting the authority for the next five-year period beginning August twenty-second to have authority to use the banks. I will make two quick notes. The first is First Merit Bank, an Ohio banking institution, was acquired by Huntington National Bank, another banking institution. Right now, pending federal regulatory approval, the merger should happen in the September or early October, so First Merit will no longer exist, but today, they're still an independent banking system. The other note is Lake National Bank was acquired by Erie Bank. They still have a local presence, the same individuals assisting us with our banking needs, but they're in the process of the regulatory approval to change their name. So, it'd be a name change, but the, the same basic relationship. So, those things will occur over this coming five-year period. So, I request approval.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
That completes my items.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there any unfinished business? Does anyone have unfinished business?
No, ma'am.
Any new business?
I don't know.
Is there a hearing of the public on any items, not just the engend items? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Or does anybody have anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Second. Please call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Congratulations to everybody.